Yeah.
I've heard them laugh.
Okay.
Jerry.
Jerry always.
I jury. Jerry. Jerry.
Oh, hey.
Willie just looking at us like.
I don't know if we've done enough of these things in the last. You think we might have enough of these soon? Nancy, did you make any more of these? Well, we used to have plenty of them, no? Okay. If we have to stop.
Don't take a whole lot of lunch.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started and reconvene from our recess meeting of last Monday. Um, with that being said, let's, uh, uh, call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Willie Campbell.
Here.
Mark Levin.
Here.
Robert Acuff.
I'll correct up, we'll be late.
Okay. Nancy Brown.
Here.
Mike Hill.
Here.
Patty Woodby. Patty Woodby.
You're muted, Patty.
She's here. Bradley Johnson.
Here.
Mark Castor.
Here.
Charles Von Cannon.
I'm here.
Isaiah Grunstaff.
Hi.
Here.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Here.
Ross Garland.
Here.
Layla Ward.
Here.
Ginger Holdren.
Here.
Randall Jenkins.
Here.
Gary Bailey.
Here.
Travis Hill.
Here.
Sandra Culler.
Present.
Aaron Frazier.
Here.
Robin McCamey.
Here.
Kelly Collins.
Here.
Thomas Prophet.
He just texted me, he's having some technical difficulties.
He's here, right?
Yes.
Okay, and Robert Acuff will be here, right?
Right.
Okay. Oh, we have a forum present.
All right, we have a forum present. Uh, as I said, Dr. Acuff is running a few minutes behind. Uh, he'll, he'll jump in on the Zoom meeting as soon as he's able. Um, so the next item on the agenda will be, uh, approve the agenda. But with that being said, I need to amend the agenda. Uh, first, I need to add to 9A, that will be the election of an interim vice chair, until the mayor position is filled, and however that works out. Also, uh, we will have something come up during the mayor report for an appointment to the 911 board. And so they will address that. And with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Mr. Frazier. Need discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell.
Here.
Mark Levin.
Yes.
Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Tester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grunstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Right.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet. I guess it's yes. Okay.
Motion passed. Next item is the opening prayer, and that will be led by, uh, Commissioner Willie Campbell. You'll please stand, please.
Dear heavenly gracious Father God and Lord, as we bow our heads and approach the throne of grace, God, another day, Lord, we want to thank you, Lord, for watching over us this day. Lord, keeping your unseen hands upon each one of us, Lord. God, we do thank you, Lord, for the prayers, Lord, we thank you for everything that you've done for us, God, and what you're going to do. Lord, we just, uh, give you praise and honor tonight, Lord, for everything, Lord, that you've done in our lives. Most of all, for saving our soul, God. Lord, tonight, we do thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross, Lord, that we could have this privilege to stand tonight, Lord. God, tonight, we do pray, Lord. Still, for the Barnett family, God, we still pray for them and others that lost loved ones and their families, God, we pray, Lord, that you watch them. Lord, we pray for all those that are on the front lines of this virus, Lord, we pray, Lord, that you have your protection on them. Lord, we pray tonight, Lord, to go into this meeting, Lord. God, that we'll conduct ourselves in a godly way. Lord, we ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from the August meeting.
Motion's approved.
Motion approved by Mr. James, second by Mr. Levin. Any corrections, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell.
Uh.
Mark Levin.
Uh.
Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown.
Ah.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Tester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grunstaff.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler. Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins. Yes.
Thomas Prophet. All right.
All right, thank you. Next item will be the approval of notaries and bonds. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the names off.
Okay, if I can. Got another one added to that.
Okay.
Yeah. I got one. What do I do with that? Did you mark it? All right. Carlana Allen Roberts, Jr., Linda Scaff, Diane Dawn Carter, Kathy Thomason, and Cynthia E. Wolford.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. James.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Need discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Willie Campbell.
Yes.
Mark Levin.
Yeah.
Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Tester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grunstaff.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Aye.
Layla Ward.
Aye.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier. Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Hold on, motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of debate for appointment of commissioners to standing committees. So if it's okay, everybody, we'll skip the first district until maybe Dr. Acuff comes, we'll save them for last. We'll start with the second district. Uh, need to discuss it and tell us who and what committee they're going to go on. The second district.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mike.
As I understand it from reading through the packet, I think we all want to remain in the positions we currently occupy. Is that correct, colleagues?
It is.
It is.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, we are in agreement and we respectfully request to remain where we are currently assigned.
Can you read those names off and what committee?
Yes, sir, that would be, um, that would be Ms. Brown appointed to highway, education, landfill. Uh, Ms. Woodby to budget nominating, and myself to health and welfare, buildings and grounds, rules and bylaws, and law enforcement.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Okay? Third district.
Mr. Vice Chair Brad Johnson, third. Our committee assignment is going to be, uh, Commissioner Charles Von Cannon on budget nominating. Uh, myself for the building and grounds, health, welfare, law enforcement, rules and bylaws. And Mark, Commissioner Mark Tester for education, highway, and landfill.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, fourth district.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, after some thought, and, uh, I believe, according to the packet, I believe that I'm going to be stepping down from budget, uh, attending, uh, begin attending the building and grounds, rules and bylaws, health and welfare, and law enforcement. And that, uh, Mr. James will then take over as, uh, uh, my position on budget for the fourth district.
Thank you, Commissioner Grunstaff. District five.
Hello. Uh, District five, we, we would like to stay on the, the same committees as the previous year. That would be Ross Garland serving budget nominating, uh, Ginger Holdren building and grounds, health and welfare, law enforcement, rules and bylaws, and Ms. Layla Ward education, landfill, and highway.
Thank you. Commissioner Garland. Sixth district.
Uh, yes, Chair, uh, we, uh, also wish to stay the same from my understanding, uh, that with, uh, the U, sir, at, on budget nominating, Gary Bailey on, uh, landfill, education, and highway, and myself on rules and bylaws, health, welfare, building grounds, law. Gary, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Travis.
Mr. Jenkins.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
District seven.
Here, since Mr. Frazier was sitting there, he would take care of it. Far as I know, we'll be in the same position. Of course, we still have one to be placed in Mr. Lyons's position. I will stay on landfill, highway, and, uh, education. I assume that Mr. Frazier's staying on budget nomination by what I read.
Thank you, Commissioner Culler. Eighth district.
I think we're going to change a little bit this time. Um, Ms. McCamey's going to be on budget and nominating. Mr. Prophet's going to be on rules, health, and, uh, laws and bylaws and buildings. And I'm going to be on landfill, education, and highway, and still say, stay on animal shelter and planting.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. And I guess we'll go back to the first, is Dr. Acuff on yet?
No.
Okay. First district.
Uh, well, Mr. Tester's going to be coming over to the, thanks with us, but as far as that, everybody's going to stay the same.
Willie's going to be on budget?
Yeah, Willie's going to be on budget, and I'm on highway education. No, I think, no, making committee too.
Acuff's on building grounds.
Mm-hmm. You're on the nominating committee too, Art, right?
Okay. All right, I'm going to have the clerk call each standing committee by district. And if you will, say yes or no, it's hard for the clerk to understand the ayes and the nays, so if you'll just say yes or no, once she reads them off and calls you by name to, to accept each one of these groups.
Ready?
Yeah.
Willie Campbell.
Yes.
Mark Levin.
Yes.
Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mister.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grunstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Right.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
And Thomas Prophet.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, agenda is the election of the financial management committee. So I'll open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Travis Hill.
I nominate.
Mr. James has nominated Travis Hill.
I nominate Mark Levin.
Mr. Campbell has nominated Mark Levin.
I nominate Ginger Holdren.
Sir, I'm saying. Mr. James has nominated Ms. Holdren.
I nominate Bradley Johnson.
Mr. Tester has nominated Brad Johnson.
Vice Chairman. Vice Chairman, I would like to nominate Austin James.
Ms. Holdren nominates Austin James.
Travis. I'd like to nominate Randall Jenkins.
Mr. Bailey nominates Randall Jenkins.
Motion to cease nomination.
Second.
We have a motion to cease nomination, Dennis Seck.
Hold on. Hold on. Um, I'd like to nominate Dr. Acuff.
Ms. Collins nominates Dr. Acuff. Anybody else?
Hey, I didn't miss, Ma. Okay. Emmy, we got.
I got seven.
Okay, I didn't get any, and Dr. Acuff.
I'm going to repeat the, the nominees. We have Travis Hill, Mark Levin, Ginger Holdren, Bradley Johnson, Austin James, Randall Jenkins, and Dr. Acuff.
Dr. Acuff, Travis Hill.
One more time.
Okay, Travis Hill. Mark Levin. Ginger Holdren.
Wait. Wait a minute, I'm going to have to do this.
Travis, how many is that?
Okay.
Seven.
Five. Are we doing eight? No, it's six. You got to have.
Dr. Acuff. Travis Hill.
Come on, repeat more times for everybody. Travis Hill. Mark Levin. Ginger Holdren. Brad Johnson.
Brad.
Okay.
Austin James. Randall Jenkins.
Okay.
And Robert Acuff.
Okay.
Should be seven.
Levin, Acuff, Johnson, uh, James, Holdren, Jenkins, and Hill. Got it? Okay.
Put your motion.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second cease nomination, so with that being said, Austin James made the motion and, uh,
Frazier.
Frazier seconded. So we'll take a vote to end nominations. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Okay, Willie Campbell.
What's his name?
We're in the nominations.
Yes.
Nomination ceased.
Yes.
Okay, Mark Levin.
Yes.
Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Tester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grunstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
No.
No?
No.
Aaron Frazier.
Right.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
No.
Thomas Prophet. Okay.
Two no's.
Two no's and two a's.
Motion passed. We'll be electing four people, um, so you'll call out the last name when your name is called. Madam Clerk.
That is four, right, say that again, please.
Yes, Chair. You'll be voting for four people.
Thank you.
This is going to be a challenge, I gotta make, I gotta do something, I have this right here. I just, hold on a second.
Travis.
I gotta make some.
You. Okay. Before we, uh, just kept on until we.
Levin.
We. Are you saying we need to call four people?
Four people, yeah.
Yeah. No, that's good, no.
Willie.
Johnson.
Travis Hill. Yes, sir.
How many do you vote for? How many?
Four. I'll pick four.
Four names.
Do you have to vote for four?
Yeah, I mean, because it don't matter, it don't boost any. Not sure.
You did not have to vote for all four.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you.
So you can only vote for one, is that right? Mr. Harden?
I'm sure on that.
There is.
What was that question?
Uh, Commissioner Levin's is asking if you have to vote for four people, or can you just vote for like one?
You don't have to vote for anybody, but you can vote for up to four people.
Mark Tester. Thank you.
Mark Tester.
He nominated Brad.
Okay. Uh, Mark Levin, or something.
Willie, nominate Mark.
Yeah, okay. All right, here we go, we'll try.
All right, call the roll, please.
Okay, Willie Campbell.
Mark Levin. Johnson.
And Johnson. I can't even read my. Okay, uh, Mark Levin.
Mark Levin, Hill. And Bailey, I may not Bailey, but Austin.
Okay. Mark Levin.
Little before.
And who else did you say, Mark Levin, to?
Hill.
Hill.
And Austin James.
Okay. Robert Acuff, he's not here. Okay, Nancy Brown.
All right, Travis Hill, Ginger Holdren, and Austin James.
I forgot about January, Dutch.
I did, too. Yeah.
We can't back up on that now, can we? Once we make our vote.
I think so.
Okay. Mike Hill.
Travis Hill. Robert Acuff. Bradley Johnson. Ginger Holdren.
Bradley Johnson. This is tough.
Play chess. Ginger.
Patty Woodby.
Austin James. Randall Jenkins. Ginger Holdren. Travis Hill.
Brad Johnson.
Travis Hill. Uh, Holdren. Myself. Austin James.
Mark Tester.
Brad Johnson. Ginger Holdren. Austin James. And Travis Hill.
Charles Von Cannon.
Commissioner Brad Johnson. Commissioner Austin James. Commissioner Travis Hill. And Commissioner S. Ginger Holdren. Is that right?
Isaiah Grinstaff.
The Commissioner James, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Acuff, and Commissioner Jenkins.
Acuff, Jenkins. Okay, what did he say?
Brad Johnson.
Brad Johnson.
Johnson and James.
Okay. Acuff, Johnson, and James. That it?
And then Jenkins.
And Jenkins.
Okay, Jerry Prophet.
Commissioner Travis Hill, Commissioner Mark Hill, Commissioner Austin James, Randall Jenkins.
Who, who was that again, Travis?
Did you say me, Blevins? You said Travis Blevins?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Travis Hill.
Hill and Blevins. Can you repeat them again? It was Prophet.
James and Jenkins.
Martin Hill, Austin James, Randall Jenkins. Mark Blevins. I'm sorry, Travis Hill.
Travis Hill.
And Mark Blevins.
Mark Blevins.
Randall James.
And Randall James. Spot on. I hope I'm getting these right. Uh, Austin James, uh,
Hill, Holdren, Johnson, James.
Okay, Ross Garland.
James, Holdren, Acuff, Johnson.
James, Holdren.
She done got Ross, didn't she?
Okay, Holdren, Johnson. Acuff.
Holdren, did you get Holdren?
Holdren, Acuff, Johnson, and James.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Leila Ward.
Hill, Holdren, James, and Jenkins.
Ginger Holdren.
James, Johnson.
Who did she say?
James. James, Johnson, Hill.
Holdren.
All right, Randall Jenkins. Randall Jenkins.
Acuff, Jenkins, Holdren, and Johnson.
Repeat those again, Randall.
Of Acuff, Jenkins, Holdren, and Johnson.
Acuff, Holdren, Jenkins, and Johnson. Okay, Gary Bailey.
Travis Hill, Ginger Holdren, Austin James, and Randall Jenkins.
Acuff, Travis Hill.
Holdren, James, Johnson, Jenkins.
Okay, Sandra Culler.
Holdren, Johnson, James, Acuff.
Okay, Holdren, Acuff, Johnson, right?
James. James.
James and Johnson. Okay, Erin Fraser.
Um, Jenkins, James, Holdren, and Hill.
Robin McCamey.
James, Holdren, Hill, and Jenkins.
Kelly Collins.
Jenkins and Acuff.
Thomas Prophet.
Am I standing correct? Am I standing correct on this? I could vote for four, is that correct?
You don't have to vote for four.
You don't have to. Okay, I'll go. Let me go with two more. Hill and Travis Hill and Ginger Holdren.
I backed up, because we didn't check it by name, so.
Travis Hill.
Attorney Harden.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell originally only voted for, was it two?
Two.
Two, he's wanting to do his other two votes, can he go back and add two votes?
Certainly, anybody can change their vote before the final votes are revealed or add to it, in this case, which would make things a lot easier than trying to change.
Okay. Mr. Campbell has two votes left.
It's Travis Hill and Ginger Holdren.
He votes for Hill and Holdren.
I have one left. And I want to do Ginger Holdren.
Mr. Blevins had one left, he's going with Holdren. Anybody else, Mr. Kester, remaining votes?
Nancy Brown, I wanna, uh, add Randall Jenkins to mine.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Okay. All right, tally the votes.
What'd you get? I got sixteen for you.
I got fifteen.
I got fifteen.
You got fifteen? Well, if two against one, let's say fifteen.
Three against one.
Three against one. Okay, fifteen. Okay. For Jenkins.
Jenkins, I had eleven.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I got eight, only eight for him. But I'm, I missed it, so what'd y'all get? Eleven?
I got eleven.
What'd you get?
Eleven. I had eleven for Jenkins.
I had eleven.
I've got eleven, Travis.
All right.
Sixteen for James.
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 One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen for James. And for Brad Johnson, I got. I got twelve for Brad Johnson, so what you get? And for Acuff, I got. I got five for Acuff.
Six.
I had six for Acuff.
Six, okay, we'll go with you. Okay, and for, uh.
Blevins and Holdren.
Blevins. For Blevins, I got one, two, three. I got three for Blevins, so what you got? Okay. I got nineteen for Holdren.
I got eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen for Holdren.
Okay, so we'll go with you.
So the vote tallies are Ginger Holdren with eighteen votes, Austin James with seventeen votes, Travis Hill with fifteen votes, Bradley Johnson with twelve votes, Randall Jenkins with eleven votes, Robert Acuff with six votes, and Mark Blevins with three votes. So your Financial Management Committee will consist of Holdren, James, Hill, and Johnson. Congratulations, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is the election of an interim vice chair. So I'll open up the floor for nominations.
Nominating Air freshener.
Austin James nominates Erin Fraser.
I nominate Mark Blevins.
Willie Campbell nominates Mark Blevins.
I nominate Robert Acuff.
Mr. Mike Hill nominates Robert Acuff.
Nominating Isaiah Brown today.
Austin James nominates Isaiah Grinstaff. Anybody else?
Make the motion, nomination ceased.
Second, have a motion for nomination ceased in a second by Mr. James. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Who you voting for?
No, no, we're not. Seasoned nominations.
Seasoned, okay. Sorry. Mark Blevins.
Yes.
Robert Acuff, Nancy Brown.
Uh.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Kester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinstaff. Isaiah.
You're muted, Isaiah.
Sorry, didn't unmute. Yes.
Okay, Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
No.
Erin Fraser.
Yes.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet. Yeah, number one.
Clerk calls the roll. Say the last name of the person you'd like to see to be the interim vice chair. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Mark Blevins.
Can you repeat the names, please?
Okay, the nominees are Erin Fraser, Mark Blevins, Robert Acuff, and Isaiah Grinstaff.
Thank you.
Mark Blevins.
Blevins. Blevins.
Robert Acuff, Nancy Brown.
Fraser.
Mike Hill.
Acuff.
Patty Woodby.
Blevins.
Bradley Johnson.
Acuff.
Who did say?
Acuff. Mark Kester.
Blevins.
Charles Von Cannon.
Commissioner Blevins.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Acuff.
Jerry Prophet.
Blevins.
Austin James.
Acuff.
Ross Garland.
Acuff.
Leila Ward.
Grinstaff.
Ginger Holdren.
Blevins.
Blevins. Is that what she said?
Who was that?
Randall Jenkins.
Grinstaff.
Gary Bailey.
Fraser.
Travis Hill.
Blevins.
Sandra Culler.
Acuff.
Erin Fraser.
Fraser.
Robin McCamey.
Grinstaff.
Kelly Collins.
Acuff.
Thomas Prophet. Not here. Okay, I got two, one, two, three. Isaiah got three. Is that what you got? One, two. Blevins. Okay, Isaiah got three, is that what you got?
Yes.
Okay, and Acuff got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Acuff got seven. Okay, and Mark got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
This is fluid.
Is that what you got?
We have a majority.
Eight.
So it'll be a round.
And Fraser got two, three.
Leaving, I got a majority, so I believe Attorney Harden, the lowest, lowest vote getter drops off.
There's two, same.
Yeah.
Isaiah will drop off. The two low vote getters, Fraser and Grinstaff, both with three votes would drop off, so your choices, Blevins or Acuff.
Okay, so we'll go to a second round of voting, between Mark Blevins and Robert Acuff.
Okay, Willie Campbell.
Blevins.
Mark Blevins.
Blevins.
Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown.
Blevins.
Mike Hill.
Acuff.
Patty Woodby.
Blevins.
Bradley Johnson.
Acuff.
Mark Kester.
Blevins.
Charles Von Cannon.
Blevins.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Bob Acuff.
Jerry Prophet.
Blevins.
Austin James.
Acuff.
Ross Garland.
Acuff.
Leila Ward.
Blevins.
Ginger Holdren.
Blevins.
Blevins. Randall Jenkins.
Acuff.
Gary Bailey.
Blevins.
Travis Hill.
Blevins.
Sandra Culler.
Acuff.
Erin Fraser.
Blevins.
Robin McCamey.
Blevins.
Kelly Collins.
Acuff.
And Thomas Prophet. Okay.
Hey, clerk, I think Thomas may be on the phone, actually, I'm not sure if he's comfortable to vote on this, but I think he might be on now with us.
Thomas?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
Okay.
Thomas, you have a choice, we're nominating for vice, interim vice chair, and the two nominees are Mark Blevins and Robert Acuff. So you just need to cast the name of the person you'd like to see in that position.
Uh, Acuff. So Acuff is nine, nine, eleven, thirteen. He's got a majority.
Just need twelve.
Six, eight, ten, thirteen for Blevins.
The tally is Mark Blevins with thirteen votes, Robert Acuff with nine votes. Robert, or, uh, Mark Blevins will be your interim vice chair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mark.
Congratulations, Mark, y'all.
Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Ninety. Thank you, Mr. Ninety.
Here. All right, we're gonna go ahead and go the next items, the mayoral report. I think it's very small, and then we'll take a ten-minute recess after that, so, Ms. Woodby?
Yeah, we don't have a lot for that right now. Um, just wanted to make sure everybody received the report on the debt obligation where we refinance the bonds for the jail, which was awesome. It was a great move. I hope everybody received that. Abby sent it out today. And then the next thing, we will be filling that position on the 9-1-1 board. I will do that if I'm still in this position next month, based upon the board's recommendations. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And just before we'll recess for ten minutes. Come back at six fifty-six.
One, two, how many? Wonder how many votes that's left. Let's do it all.
Yeah, I hope it is. Forty-six.
You're doing good, thank you. This is all we've got left, thanks.
Yep, yeah.
I'm glad I got it. We got a minute.
That's a little.
I hope so.
Everything's done.
That's come up in.
What are you saying about? What are you thinking about? Your day thought.
Can you see Mark running a meeting? Benny, this is the most ridiculous thing I've been through in a long time.
About the right time, too, you're into it.
I just hate for what you just told me for. You talk about being deserved.
I mean, that's what you like.
Well, they need these votes. Your vote on much grant is hard.
You get to be friendly with people, you know, this.
How do you get that?
If you take that part out.
That's my vote.
If you take that part out, it's right, it's fixed, it's fixed. You know, you move the person, you pull the over the camera, and then you don't.
That's insane. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna completely rethink that. I'm not gonna vote. That's crazy.
You're fine to do.
I'm not voting for him.
I might not be next time. I really think.
Are you really?
Yeah, it's.
You don't like it? So I, I, I would have thought it was gonna be. What you do? No matter what you do, try something for that. I mean, you can't give somebody, you can't give someone.
If I was to quit tomorrow, I could say, okay, well, I mean, it's really meant the way it works.
I think we're probably going to always look well together.
It's two, three, yeah, such and such.
We've heard the developer commission in Austin. My best of all commissions. I think this one, it might be out.
You know, I'm not missing.
Do you think there's people now, for the first time, really in the right positions to work their job as they want to do?
Say that again.
Do you think there's people in the right positions? In some of the positions that we're put, you know, all about being in the right place, finally putting the right people in the right positions.
Well.
I mean, it's like our addition. He does members all day long. It'd be crazy if we were in a, a bad gym, that's why he does really. It just not.
What?
I'm telling you, it's been.
Well, that's, that's, that's why still, it's also, if you don't let your feelings go into the job, if you do it fair and square, and don't let your feelings go, yes, I do. But if you, uh, and I don't, you know, I don't. I'm not saying anybody, no.
Any of these positions, you have to be fired across the board.
You have to. And I try my best, I try my best to be good on my budget. And not to be coming along, so.
Yeah, everybody did, did it, sure.
Never had, never will.
Well, we gotta, we must, I think, we gotta agree that if somebody thinks something.
Well, you know, I spent more of this time, but it was in, it was in, uh, when we got back for our, uh, that process.
Remember what happened, uh, Andrew? Andrew?
Andrew. He has.
I hope, I hope Travis Hill has a. Epic. And old Blevins. William Nile, my, my, of course.
Is that song?
To channel, part of county news, because this is gonna be a comedy zone. It'll be Monday Night Live. Well, I'm getting a call. I don't know who it's from. I'm talking, so I'll, I'll talk to you later.
Hey, Sandra, what you doing?
Uh, Commissioner Coller, you need to mute your microphone.
Are you?
Are you? You can go in there. Or you could, you can go in there if you want to.
I don't wanna go in there. They, they, they fucking laughed me, didn't they?
Talk about a comedy zone. Well, it ain't gonna be over by election time.
What?
The virus. And you know what? I'll bet you.
When it's over, it's when.
A year and a half, a year and a half or more, at least.
You think?
Yeah, for this reason.
What?
If they had the virus today, and it was approved by the FDA, I'd take it.
A shot?
Now.
Yeah.
Next thing is, forty-two percent of people they polled will not take it.
No.
And until they take it, it's.
Would you take it?
Yeah.
Would you?
And it's, I don't have that many people that die before it's over. I could beat one of them.
Well, we all could.
Because of my age and.
You know what?
Things I've been through.
You know what? Until God says come on.
But I stay away from people pretty well every day.
Well, I do too, but I'm in a glass cage.
See, you've got, but I, I work by myself.
Yeah.
And, uh.
You still down at Bimberg?
Yeah, I stay out at six thirty. I've got a hundred and six people working.
Do you really?
Yeah. Hell, a hundred and six.
Still make that lotions and potions?
I'll give you a job when you get, when you retire.
Oh, yeah.
And you can be the, you can be the pinup girl for the.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you can be the pinup boy with your tight-fitting jeans.
He could. You'd be the, you'd be the ghost counter. You can count the ghosts.
Count the ghosts? Hey.
There's probably zero.
I probably are. Do you still make lotions and potions? You still make lotions and potions? What do you make down there? What do you make?
What?
What do you make down there?
I've got eighteen different companies.
What do you make?
We make lowboy trailers. We've got an additive that goes in oil well drilling, that goes to Houston, Texas. We've got a company that handles Accur and Honda Motors and Transmission by online. We've got a German company that I don't talk about.
He said sunshine. He said sunshine.
Anyway.
Must be wanting to get this over. And what else, Charlie?
Eighteen different things. Chrome plating.
Go ahead. Now do it. All right. We'll go ahead and get started with committee reports. Chairman Garland, if you want to lead off with budget, we'll go ahead and get started.
Let's do it. Seems to be in a couple of weeks, I guess, on this budget meeting, but it was a really good one. Actually, I don't know if there was any, uh, no vote that came through there at all, so, uh, I'll go ahead and get started and call it off. First item, I'd like to make a motion to approve an amendment from unassigned fund balance, and the amount of $2,000 should be used to increase the outside agency's budget for the Shepherd's Inn. $2,000.
Second tip. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. James. Any discussion? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert Acuff. Robert Acuff. Nancy Brown. Robert Acuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown. Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Kester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward. Ginger Holdren. Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey. Crazy Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Coller.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier. Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
Uh, next item, I'll put, form of a motion to approve, uh, an amount of $2,500 to be used to increase the outside agency's budget for Children's Advocacy Center. Money's to be coming from general fund balance.
Motion by Garland, second by James. Any discussion? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert Acuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown. Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Kester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon. Isaiah Grinstaff.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James. Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Coller.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Yes.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, next item, I'll make a motion to approve up to $600,000 to be set aside in county commission expense, a reserve for a potential match on the ECD broadband grants. These monies will come from unassigned fund balance. If, if the grant's not accepted, it will be returned.
Second by Mike Hill. Any discussion?
Chairman, uh, Acuff first district here, just a little explanation. For those of you that have been on our Zoom calls, um, and I will now, I can say more about this at health and welfare time, but, uh, it does not look like we're gonna make the October sixth budget, but I just got a mem, a email. But I just got a memo, a email which I distributed to those of you on the committee, health and welfare, as well as to others. About two or three more potential ones that are coming through the state. So I think it, in all clarity and fairness and disclosure, we still, still have some other opportunities out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. A. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the road.
Willie Campbell.
Uh.
Mark Blevins.
Uh.
Robert A. Cuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Ah.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Color.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
Okay. Next item, put in the form of a motion is to appropriate funds from the governor's local government support grant. In the amount of $587,499 to be used by the county highway department. For asphalt materials used to pave up to 16.7 miles of Carter County roadways.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. James. Any discussion?
Chairman, just a point of clarification. I know that we have a, and I wasn't in the budget when this was discussed. I haven't seen, didn't get to read the minutes tonight. We have a gas tax. How does this supplant, or does this somehow aid, get them more money? Or what about the gas tax and paving throughout the state of Tennessee?
Mr. Cobal.
Who was that?
I don't know if you want to take that question, or Mr. Cobal?
Well, Roger may be able to talk more about it, but I know, I mean, these funds are coming from, from the government aided funds from, you know, COVID related and where we were giving up to the 1.2 million is where this money's coming from. But if Roger wants to speak on the gas tax, gas tax, he may know a little bit more than I would.
Is Roger on here?
I think he is. Or Brad, are you there Brad?
I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, according to what was submitted to the budget committee by, by the road superintendent. For the past couple of years, the money in the budget for paving has been used for other purposes. Primarily for rock due to all the flooding. And he is just asking, asking this, this to, this to work towards getting caught up on his paving.
Brad, I got, I got unmootied right, I was trying to get that done. But anyway, what Dr. A. Cuff said there, if you remember in this year's budget, the gasoline and diesel petroleum tax. That we had to cut our way budget back roughly a million dollars. Which cut our asphalt paving way down and our stomp way down and several other items too. And by using some of this government money that Tennessee relief money, we can increase our pavement that we can do this year for quite a bit. But like Dr. A. Cuff said, was that sales tax on petroleum. And that's the reason that we cut the budget for the highway department. And this funds would help us do more paving.
So Roger, how many miles does that get you? Sixteen, seventeen?
Yeah, a little over sixteen, Dr. A. Cuff. The full amount of that, I think I figured around 32 miles and stuff, but with half the money, which that is, half the money would be, would be a little over 16 miles. And we could do, we could probably do two miles in each district. And, and we have some other money, you know, that, we've still got $200,000 or $300,000 in the line item for paving that was left over. So we add that to it. So we should be able to do maybe three miles per district by using what's already in the budget too.
And Roger, you'd mentioned that, that us as commissioners, you know, kind of in our districts to maybe listen to folks that have had a, you know, wanted to get some of these roads paved, or if you go out there on your own and see some that really need some work done, to kind of recommend that to, to the highway department and Mr. Cobal.
Mr. Von Cannon would like to speak.
The, Roger has been, I've been on his, that committee for 10 years, almost 10 years. And Roger has been very, very good at scheduling. That's something we didn't see a lot of in the past. Therefore, he got behind with the last two years of flooding and, and the amount of money and time he's had to spend on reconstructing roads. Especially in the first district. So this is something that's needed. And again, it, it shows good management on the part, in my opinion, of Roger utilizing this money at this time.
Any more questions for me?
Chairman Hill, if I could. Yes, sir. Mr. Cobal, the railroad grade road could use a little help if you're, if you're taking nominations.
Yes, sir, Mike, I'm taking nominations and, and I would like, I would like to get that paved if that's what you guys in Roan Mountain want us to do. I'd be glad to do that.
Shrink it, shrink it.
I'd have to get that worked.
I think it might be, before we get off on naming every road in each district right here, it might be better if we kind of save that for a later time before this gets out of hand. I probably shouldn't have mentioned that.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the road.
Willie Campbell.
Oh, hold on, one second. Go ahead, Ms. Cobal.
But didn't you all ask the departments to decrease their budget this past year with all the uncertainty? And Mr. Cobal responded in kind and did that? And many departments did not do that. And I just want to recognize his cooperation with the budget committee in doing that. Am I correct?
Believe that's correct, Ms. Cobal.
Thank you, this will give him some of that back. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, call the road.
Willie Campbell.
Uh.
Mark Blevins.
Uh.
Robert A. Cuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Ah.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Double yes.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
I get your trip, yes.
Austin James.
One yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Color.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Yes.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. The next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to appropriate funds from, once again, the governor's local government support grant. The amount of $20,000 to be placed in the sheriff's department budget. To be restricted to be used by the Carter County Sheriff's Department to contract with the federal communications frequency coordinator for the county communication project.
I'll second that.
Motion by Garland, second by Mr. Testor. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the road, Madam Clerk.
Willie Campbell.
Uh.
Mark, Mark Blevins. Robert A. Cuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Color.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right, next item, a motion to approve an amendment from the capital improvements line. In the amount of $20,228 to be set aside to pay parking lots at planning and probation office.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. James, any discussion? Mr. Blair.
Couldn't understand what he said. Could he run that by us again?
Chairman Garland, could you run that motion by again, please?
Yeah, no problem. Motion to approve an amendment from the capital improvements line. In the amount of $20,228. This money to be set aside to pave the parking lot at the planning and probation office.
And I'd just like to add to that, if you don't care, Ross, that it's the, our highway department's the one that's doing that.
Austin, is that including your rock and everything?
That's what Roger gave us quoting, that's what he told us everything would be.
The drainage and everything.
Yeah, he said that would be total package.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the road.
Willie Campbell.
Uh.
Mark Blevins.
Uh.
Robert A. Cuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Testor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Color.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
Great. Next item, I'll put in the form of a motion to approve a proposal from Keller Glass. In the amount of $8,705 to be used to install a glass enclosure in the county clerk's office. These monies coming from the CARES Act money.
Very good.
Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Blevins, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the road.
Willie Campbell.
Uh.
Mark Blevins.
Uh.
Robert A. Cuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grinstaff.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet.
Aye.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Color.
Aye, yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right. Next item, a motion to approve an amendment in the amount of $18,500 to be placed in the courthouse security project line. To replace the tile in the foyerston hallways in the courthouse.
I get the vote.
Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Blevins, any discussion?
This money has been budgeted and will come from the capital improvements line.
Mr. James. Mr. James.
Yeah, I want to, Ross, on that motion, I, I believe when it come out of budget, we, uh, just was putting it, I don't, I, I don't know that it'll cause a problem, but we was just setting it in the contingency fund because we've already allocated what we had left in the contingency to pay for, uh, the tile and stuff. Um, we've done excess that out, so this is put extra in there in case there was something arose during the, um, the thing, so I just want to make sure that that ain't no problem.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're good, Brad, I don't know if you want to speak on that, but, uh, like, the money was there.
Yeah, there's plenty of money in the capital improvements reserve.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby. Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Hi.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, next item, motion to appropriate funds from the governor's local support grant in the amount twenty-five thousand to be placed in property assessor's budget and twenty-five thousand to be placed in reappraisal budget to purchase new vehicles for their office.
Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. James, any discussion? See you none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins.
Yes.
Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Hill, can you repeat your vote?
C, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right, very good, thanks. I'll start now with our regular line item budget amendment, so if you want to check your, your packet there, if you've got a printout or whatever, we'll follow along with, uh, general fund one oh one, moving up, et cetera. Um, next item, motion to appropriate or to approve general fund one oh one, a budget amendment number three, total of nine hundred, five thousand, eight hundred, sixty-one dollars, seventy-seven cents, twenty-six thousand coming from unassigned fund balance. Here's a second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Frazier, any discussion? See you none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
One more second, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, question on, uh, number ten, which is, uh, taking out the unassigned fund balance for, the evergreen compensation study, I thought that that was on a total contract, it's only just in hold because of the COVID nineteen. Why we add money to it? That, we had an appropriation in last year's budget and all unused appropriations expire at the end of the year. There was no purchase order for that, uh, service since it's unsure when it's going to be able to be completed. But we're still waiting on time in the future to have that done. But that holds the same way, even though you, or the county agreed to a total contract regardless of what, there was no, uh, end date as far as completion, so that means that money was obligated regardless. I mean, I know it's immaterial right now, but how did that work? Right, there, there was no payable or, or a P O at the end of the year to encumber any of those appropriations in last year's budget. Therefore, all we're doing is just simply budgeting again cause that, that amount rolled into fund balance at June thirtieth. No further striking, Mr. Chair.
Brad, would you care to touch on item six, please?
Okay, number six. Uh, just wanted to get those, those, uh, CARES Act monies in the budget because the, uh, the last request reimbursement has to be filed by November first and all funds from that grant have to be spent by December thirtieth. So if we come and do individual items, we're going to run out of time before this, uh, the, the period ends.
Thank you. So where's the money going that's left over?
It goes back.
So you're saying, Brett, we don't have to spend that six seventy-one, seven ninety all this year before December thirty-first, you're saying?
We do, December thirtieth is the last day.
Oh, so we, it has to be used this year.
And I think they're trying to get that extended, but these, uh, the requirements and the rules and the procedures for this change on almost a daily basis.
Yeah. But, and this, this money right here is going in the CARES Act that we use, used for, uh, the shields or, or the offices, you know, for
Right.
those, uh, things like that so far, anyway.
Correct, correct.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown. Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Hi.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Jerry, Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passed.
Very good. Uh, next item, motion to approve general purpose school fund one forty-one amendment number two, uh, total of three hundred, two thousand, five hundred, fourteen dollars, ninety-eight cents, two thirty-eight, two sixty-four, ninety-eight, coming from unassigned fund balance.
Motion to approve, second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Frazier, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Fred Johnson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
To the budget director, item number two, which it's the appropriation for unassigned fund balance to cover the nine one one, uh, fees for access, was that not in their budget? And if it wasn't, that's an operational thing, why is it coming now after the new budget's out? Okay, Gary Bailey can explain that, it's due to the, due to the way the phone bills are handled. And, you know, the nine one one fees that are on all phone bills. Yeah. They weren't charged by this company last year. So they're backing up and, and billing for it this year.
What that is, um, Mr. Johnson, basically when I changed them over to do it through the internet to do the voiceover IP, we had went on and paid the yearly bill without the nine one one fees and they told us that they'd make them up at the end of the year, we went on so we could go on and get a discount of doing it in a bulk. Well, this year, when they done the budget, it got missed because they still hadn't figured in the rate. So that's how they done it, we now have a rate, we know what it's going to cost each month.
Right, thank you, Bailey, no further, Mr. Chair.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren. Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Right.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right, great. Uh, next item, motion to approve school federal projects fund one forty-two amendment two, total of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Money coming from the central cafeteria fund balance.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. James, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren. Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right, great. Um, next item, motion to approve central cafeteria fund one forty-three amendment one, total of two thousand dollars, nothing from the central cafeteria fund balance.
I get it.
Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Blevins, any discussion? Mr. Von Cannon.
Uh, is it a, uh, state mandate that a menu be published? Back when I went to school, gave what they gave you, you didn't know what was in mystery meat and all that?
Big fluke.
Why do you publish a menu?
I, that probably goes, I mean, as far as what you see in the paper, uh, Mr. Von Cannon, I, I think that's so the students would have a, a chance to know what's coming up.
Parents will eat there, still, why do you publish it?
Actually, but that's, that's where they put it on the website and host it where the kids can look at it from home to see if they've got allergies and stuff like that, Ross, it's, it's actually, it's on the website and hosted through them through the food company.
Okay. That's good.
Waste of money.
And, I mean, and, and a good precaution too, Gary, you know, I mean, it, it's as many allergies as there are out there, so that's probably a pretty good two thousand dollars to spend.
Help out for it.
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Brad Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right. Uh, next item, motion to approve monetary donations made to the animal shelter, amount of five ninety-five and donations made to the Carter County School Department in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Frazier, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Randall Jenkins.
Yes.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet. All eyes.
Yeah.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right, great. Um, next item, motion to approve non-monetary donations from Walmart made to the animal shelter in approximate amount of six seventy-five and eighty-eight cents.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Frazier, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert A. Kev.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Hi.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All eyes, motion passed.
All right, good. Last but not least, an important motion to appropriate funds from the governor's local government support grant, the amount of five thousand five dollars to be placed in the mayor's budget to purchase a new copier.
Second. Motion by Mr. Garland, second by Mr. Frasier, end of discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert Acuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Ma'keel.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Kester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All ayes, all ayes, motion passed.
All right. Let me say this before I move on. Thanks to this past committee. I know we got some people rolling off and some new folks coming on, of course, certainly looking to welcome them with open arms. And just want to thank this, this has been a tough year, I know, this last year. The ones that have come off this budget committee have done a fantastic job. Kelly, Isaiah, Mr. Tester. So, looking forward to the new ones, but we've had some really good ones and I look for good work in this coming year.
Thank you Chairman Garland. Mr. Tester has a question, or Mr. Blevins has a question.
Yeah, hey Ross. I've got a, just a simple question. Why didn't we have some discussion and stuff concerning the planning director?
We, well, I'll say, Mark, we did have some discussion on that. Chris wasn't present at the meeting. Jay Cook sat in. We did have, I think, I'll think, you know, some positive talks on that. We didn't discuss any kind of amendments or changing his budget or anything like that. We got some clarification on kind of what had happened with this, this, this past budget, you know, not the proposed, but I do look to have Chris back coming this month, coming up for October. So, we will have that discussion again. I don't really see us trying to change a whole lot of what he's been doing. I think mostly the talks were really to, you know, kind of get on the same page where we're working with each other. Everything's transparent and, you know, things are not brought up at last minute or anything like that. So, I mean, that's still going to be, you know, debate, a talk. But Chris wasn't present and he asked it to be taken off the agenda. I didn't do it. We still had the discussion, but Chris wasn't available for that conversation, Mark.
If he's not at this next budget hearing, will they make shots down or keep walking?
Well, to my knowledge, I mean, he plans to attend. I'm going to talk to Chris and make sure that he is available if he, you know, if he's still open for that discussion. If not, we can kind of, you know, discuss as a budget committee again and offer recommendations at that time. But I kind of closed it for any kind of amendments or recommendation because he wasn't there. But Jay did, he offered some valid points to us and kind of helped out on some questions that were, had been raised before. But I think Chris will be there next month.
Okay, I do want, Chairman, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Hill, can I ask a, well, may I take a moment of personal privilege?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hill.
I reported to the Shepherd's End Board that the Budget Committee and Full Commission just restored the two thousand dollars in funding. They wanted me to pass on to all of us, all of y'all, their extreme gratitude. I'd like to thank Ms. Woodby for making that recommendation to committee and for everybody for pushing that on through.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Chairman Hill.
Thanks.
Chairman Hill.
Yes, sir.
I just have one financial related item to report.
Okay, go ahead.
Has to do with the bonds that were refunded on the fourteenth.
Okay.
We realized a net present value savings in interest of two million, three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. And that is from now until two thousand thirty-five. And that amount was two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars more than the estimate we were provided in August. And just like to thank y'all and thank Raymond James for making this happen.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your hard work and Rick and Elizabeth and this whole body for working together to refinance that bond. To save the citizens a lot of money. Okay, we'll move on to Nominating Committee.
Hey, hey, Chairman Hill.
Yes, sir, Ross.
Can I cover mine real quick or do you want?
Oh, yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
I'll go fast. Keep Carter County beautiful. They just had a recent cleanup Saturday. And this was on Buffalo Mountain, the Dry Creek. This is actually in Washington County. And this was partnering with TVA and the First Tennessee Development District also. A girl named Channing over there. But they cleaned up one thousand tires that had been dumped into just an illegal dump site. So, our group was part of that. I wasn't present for it. I know Mr. Jordan, Mike Semerly were there and I'm not sure of any others, but big time cleanup and certainly that just uncalled for to have that many tires poured anywhere really is a real disgrace. But we were part of that. So, it was a successful cleanup. They got them all out. Got a planning and beautification project this Saturday and that's in downtown Elizabethan. Got some available grant money for that actually. Keep Tennessee beautiful. They've got some bulbs, I think Irish bulbs, daisies, things like that, and, you know, kind of the downtown plots, the brick plots for that. So, if anybody wants to be part of that, I think they're meeting at eight o'clock at the Coffee Company. If you want to be present, you can be part of that. It wouldn't be a hard project and certainly something that would be gratifying and add some beauty to our downtown. So, still working hard, those guys. And then Chamber, they're always working hard anymore. I asked Joy to send me some stuff and she sent me about ten minutes of things, but I'll keep it quick. Boss Lady Presents Leader Cast Women, October 2nd, and that's at TCAT. Been some publicity on that. So, keep up, certainly with their Facebook page or the internet. Chamber Youth Ambassador Program started up. They had twenty-five students from our five high schools. I think one homeschool student visits Wilbur Lake or Watauga Lake, Wilbur Dam, Sycamore Shoals, kind of for a tourism day. And they'll keep doing that for each semester. So, that is a project that they have continued to kind of, I think it might have slacked off one semester last year, but it's back in action. They will be moving October, end of October to the East Elk Avenue Downtown location. And virtual Chamber Breakfast, October 22nd. And that's what I got for them. So, thank you for the time on that.
Thank you Chairman Garland.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to Nominating Committee.
Nominating Committee, we had the applications for the Main Street Committee and the committee recommended Aaron Frazier. And I will go ahead and put that in a form of a motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Woodby, second by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Can we call the roll? If you'll call Mr. Frasier's name, please. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Frasier.
Mark Blevins.
Frasier.
Robert Acuff.
Frasier.
Nancy Brown.
Frasier.
Ma'keel.
Frasier.
Patty Woodby.
Frasier.
Bradley Johnson.
Frasier.
Mark Kester.
Frasier.
Charles Von Cannon.
Commissioner Aaron Frazier.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Frasier.
Jerry Prophet.
Frasier.
Austin James.
Frasier.
Ross Garland.
Frasier.
Layla Ward.
Frasier.
Ginger Holdren.
Holdren.
Randall Jenkins.
Frasier.
Gary Bailey.
Frasier.
Travis Hill.
Frasier.
Sandra Culler.
Frasier.
Aaron Frazier.
Frasier.
Robin McCamey.
Frasier.
Kelly Collins.
Frasier.
Thomas Prophet.
Frasier.
Frasier, you got everyone of them.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Frasier.
Thank you.
Good job.
Aaron, I don't have a lot of information on that committee. Kelly may have a little bit more. I do, she did say that they did meet during the day. So, Kelly, do you have a contact?
Yes, it's Ms. Washburn. I can give you her email. They meet, I think it's the third Thursday at eight o'clock at Coffee Company.
Aaron, you got that?
Yep.
Let me, I'll double check on that on the third, but I know they meet at eight o'clock and they cut it off at two hours, no matter what. So, but I'll give you her name and the email address there.
All right, thanks Kelly.
Thank you Kelly, thank you Mayor. One other little bit of business and Dr. Acuff may want to jump in here. We need to appoint somebody to the homeless task force. Anybody that's interested, I think that's Dr. Acuff, if he wants to give some description about that.
Sure. The task force, as you know, is a joint task force between the city and the county to examine the issue of homeless individuals in spite thereof in Elizabethan Carter County. Pastor Brandon Young, who is pastor for Harmony Baptist Church, has agreed to chair that group. Mike Semerly is the city councilman that will be representing the city. Ann Cooper with the Appalachian Project, Homeless Project in Johnson City. Crystal Carter used to be with the United Way of Carter County, but as you know, the United Way of Carter County has now joined with the United Way of Washington County, but she indicated that she wanted to be on that group as well. I have asked Jenny Wright, who is the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, to serve on that. We also have reached out to city and county school individuals. We do have one county school individual who has dealt with the homeless for the county, county schools, and we're waiting for one to come from the city schools. And just as soon, I guess, as you all appoint whomever you want to serve on that committee, they will start their work. Probably the first item of business will be to find out exactly the extent of the homeless in our county. And probably the second order of business will be to take a field trip down to Knoxville Area Rescue Ministries in Knoxville to look at their operation. I think everybody needs to know, this isn't going to be a place for people to come and stay infinitely. The way that the Knoxville Area Rescue Ministries has worked, everybody's given a job. Everybody's given an opportunity to get back up on their feet, but it is not a permanent residence. It's to get them off the street, get them retrained if need be, find them jobs, and then find them a life that returns to some normalcy.
Thank you, Dr. Acuff. I would like to go ahead and recommend that Dr. Acuff be appointed to this task force.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would be pleased to serve.
Yes, we have a nomination for Dr. Acuff and a second by Mr. Blevins. Any more nominations?
Chairman, I'd like to move that nominations cease and we elect by acclamation at this time.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to cease nominations. So, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert Acuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Ma'keel.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Kester.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Aye.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Ross Garland.
Yes.
Layla Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren.
Yes.
Randall Jenkins.
Yeah.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
All ayes.
All ayes. But I believe this is a Zoom meeting. I think we have to call the roll by name for Dr. Acuff. So, when clerk calls the roll, if you'll say Dr. Acuff's name, please. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Willie Campbell.
Dr. Acuff.
Mark Blevins.
Dr. Acuff.
Robert Acuff.
Acuff, thank you.
Nancy Brown.
Acuff.
Ma'keel.
Acuff.
Patty Woodby.
Acuff.
Bradley Johnson.
Acuff.
Mark Kester.
Acuff.
Charles Von Cannon.
Acuff.
Isaiah Grandstaff.
Acuff.
Jerry Prophet.
Dr. Acuff.
Austin James.
Acuff.
Ross Garland.
Acuff.
Layla Ward.
Acuff.
Ginger Holdren.
Dr. O'Toole.
Randall Jenkins. Randall Jenkins.
Sorry, Acuff.
Gary Bailey.
Acuff.
Travis Hill.
Acuff.
Sandra Culler.
Acuff.
Aaron Frazier.
Dr. Acuff.
Robin McCamey.
Acuff.
Kelly Collins.
Acuff.
Thomas Prophet.
Acuff.
Okay.
All ayes, congratulations, Dr. Acuff. Thank you. You'll do a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else from nominating?
That's all.
Thank you. On to building the grounds.
For the most part, I'd like to reminisce, reflect for themselves. I'd just like to say a few things. The Corps of High Security projects move along pretty well and we was able to have a few extra things done with removing some of the older tile and replacing it and getting rid of some of the oozing glue. And we're going to be able to tear the wallpaper off the walls where it's coming off anyways, and they're going to fix the walls back and paint all that. And so, I definitely address our main area. As we come in and just for the committee, I really appreciate your years and let me serve on there and try to get some things done. And I look forward to whoever takes it over, trying to work with them and help finish up these projects. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman James. We'll move on to health and welfare.
Thank you Chairman. Just a brief update. You can certainly read the minutes for yourself, but I am pleased to let you know that we had a call with Brad Shields, who is the Senior Vice President and Chief of Technology for Ridgeline, which is subsidiary of Blue Ridge Energy Corporation. And they have indicated that they would be more than happy to work with us and looking forward to doing so. We have found out quite a bit in our inquiries over these past several months. In fact, we now know where all the fiber in this county runs from and to. And there is a large pipeline coming from Western Carolina, right through Roan Mountain, right down through Elizabethan and on into Johnson City, which is Ridgeline's property. And we will be obviously utilizing that. We're still waiting on another partner and we think that's, we know who it's going to be, but we can't announce it tonight because we don't have a memorandum of understanding with them yet. But we'll take care of Stony Creek and down, top of Stony Creek and down. So, essentially, we will have Districts One, District Two, and District Six covered. Brad Shields indicated that it will take about, for where their fiber is located in Roan Mountain, about five hundred thousand dollars to run a line into Little Milligan and Elk Mills. So, we're starting to see this materialize. I have asked, and he has Attorney Hardin, to reach out to Blue Ridge Energy and start opening the discussion to provide us with the way to develop a memorandum of understanding in order to work with them. He has already done that. I know Mr. Shields is out of town until the first part of October. As indicated, I really appreciate not only the Budget Committee, but also you on the Commission of setting aside up to six hundred thousand dollars for this project. As I indicated, we will not make the October deadline, but we will make the other deadlines that Ken Ray from First Tennessee Development District has provided us. There'll be more to say about that a little bit later. But one of the tasks before us will be to make sure that we have an idea of how many individuals of our constituents, not only in Districts One, Two, and Six, but across the county, have internet service, what kind of service do they have? And what devices actually they can connect to that service. I think it's a real exciting time for Carter County. We're long overdue for this. I really appreciate Health and Welfare for their due diligence, for interim Mayor Woodby and for Isaiah Grandstaff, Danny McLean, Sonya Miller, and a host of others who have been on those calls and and have contributed. I think it's a job well done. We're not done with it yet. But it's looking brighter than it did yesterday. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Acuff, and thank you to the committee. Y'all are hardworking and this is a huge opportunity for Carter County. And I look forward to helping push it through.
Chairman Hill.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tester.
I believe that Ridgeline also serves, if I'm not mistaken, in the Johnson City service area all of, about all of Washington County schools with my experience. Is that correct, Dr. Acuff?
Yes, sir, you are correct. I'm glad you mentioned that. I was, I think if people haven't seen the fiber map, I'm happy to provide it to everybody. It was provided to us by E and A. But we will make that available for everybody to look at. Who knew we had so much fiber in Carter County that we haven't been using? With the exception of the few strands that are lit by E and A to our county school system. So, thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate that, Mark.
Okay, we'll move on to law enforcement.
No report, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Rules and bylaws.
Please, less minutes reflect.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Education Committee. Move on to Highway Committee.
Hey, Chairman Hill.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I don't know who that, I forget who it is for education, but I read a nice article in Johnson City Press today. It was titled ETSU is kind of the heading on that, but it's, the school was to host a virtual FAFSA completion workshop. And I just thought that if we could get that maybe in the appropriate hands if interim Mayor Woodby or if we can put that maybe posted on our website through the school's website or something that shows some available ways for these students for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year to apply for FAFSA grants or financial aid, basically. But it was in the paper today. Somebody got a chance to look at that. Take a look or patch that on. I'll try to send a link or something, but I think that would benefit our students and
I agree. If you can send a link, Ross, or I can put a call in to the superintendent and see. I think, I want to say, I've heard something about the schools getting involved in that. That there may be something, but I will check on it and on the website.
Would that be, I just read the paper today. I said, I'm going to mention that tonight because I know we've got plenty of kids that could use that information and parents as well, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Garland. Highway Department.
Many reflect.
Thank you, Chairman Blevins. Landfield Committee.
Yes, Chairman. We have a couple of things that we need to discuss. As you recall, last month, we set a amount for everyone at forty-two fifty. And we were going to give a contract to Blue Ridge for the same price as the city, which meant we were going to lose money. But at our meeting, Mr. Burke came and he said he would like to do some more data on the rates before we set this committee in this rate in place. That will have to be revisited by the full commission because it was passed by the full commission. It was recommended by my committee that we come back and readdress that. I cannot address it. I did not vote in the affirmative. So, I will leave that open to anyone who wants to address it from the affirmative side.
Ms. Culler. This is Gary on landfill. I'd like to make a motion that we put all of this off. No contracts until Brad Burke looks at this and restudies the appropriate amount for us to set a rate.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Von Cannon. Any discussion?
But, Chairman, does that mean that the existing contract with the, with another agency such as the city, that that changes?
No, that does not. The city is under a three-year contract, I believe. Mr. Lyons, if you're on, if you can answer that for me. They're on a sliding scale and that
Actually, they have
this was to do anything with them.
The city has four years left.
Do they still have the five-year option at the end of that four years?
Yes, sir, they do, to renew. And that would be equal on our side as well as theirs.
But going forward, we got a chance to fix this. So, as of right now, that's the only contract that's there. So, I don't, no contracts or nothing till we set a rate after a study.
Any more discussion?
Chairman Randall Jenkins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jenkins.
So, we're going back on what we said, the meeting before. I don't understand which direction we're going. I don't understand our goal. Well, I do understand our goal here. And I advised against the last vote, but now, I mean, we've got a business owner that we're tugging two different ways now. So, I really hope that this is the direction that we have decided and we stick with it from here on out. And somebody would probably need to reach out to that business owner and apologize for tugging him every different way that we possibly could in the past couple of months. So.
I don't think Mr. Jenkins, I don't think Blue Ridge was formally offered a contract after the last meeting. That wasn't to take place until October the first. So, if there was any information given out, it wasn't given out from the appropriate people. But they were not off contract and that was to go into effect in October. So, there was anything until we can get this taken care of. So there was anything until we can get this taken care of by October one, and that is just to put the whole thing off until there's a study done on the rates.
I, I completely understand, but the way that it was discussed last time was he had until October one for us to make a decision, or it went to the forty-two rate, forty-two and a half rate. Well, I reached out to him, and I know that's not the process, but that put my name out there, and I reached out to this business owner, told him what was going on, and now we're going back a different direction. So now that puts me out there, which is fine. I know the county attorney didn't formally put a contract out there. I understand the process. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page so we don't go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Let's figure it out and go the direction and keep, you know, keep it. So.
Well, that all depends on the vote tonight. At the, at this point, I believe Mr. Bailey's motion is that we, uh, change the vote from last month until Mr. Burke can do a study of the rates.
Well, I would humbly ask you as chair to reach out to that business owner and explain. That way I, that don't sit on your committee, have to reach out to him. Please.
When the vote's over, if I need to reach out to Blue Ridge, I would be glad to do that, even though I didn't talk to them to begin with.
Any more discussion? Madam, call the roll.
Willie Campbell. Mark Blevins. Robert Acuff.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Yes.
Patty Woodby.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Castor.
Yes.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Isaiah Grunstaff.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet. Austin James.
Yes.
Uh, Ross Garland.
Yes.
Leila Ward.
Yes.
Ginger Holdren. Randall Jenkins.
No.
Gary Bailey.
Yes.
Travis Hill.
Yes.
Sandra Culler.
Yes.
Aaron Frazier.
Aye.
Robin McCamey.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
Thomas Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you.
One no.
Motion passed. Twenty-two ayes, one nay.
Two no's.
Two no's?
Two no's.
Two no's, sorry.
Who was the other voted no?
Randall. Randall, Sandra.
Randall and who?
Sandra.
Sandra voted no.
Randall and Ginger, I believe. Is that correct, Ms. Holdren?
Ginger and Randall.
Ms. Holdren, did you vote no?
I voted yes, sir.
Yes.
Sandra did.
There's only one then.
One no.
Only one, that's all about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Culler. All right. We'll move on to county attorney report.
All right. Uh, as far as litigation goes, since the last update, um, stop this, uh, the Purdue Pharma is the, uh, opioid litigation that's ever ongoing. Uh, that was initiated by the district's, uh, attorney generals for the first, second, and third. Um, that is being heard in Sullivan County Chancery Court, and it keeps getting delayed. It was set again for trial this month, uh, last week. Uh, but that was delayed again indefinitely with, with no, no set date yet. Uh, so if and when that does happen or gets scheduled, I will let you know. Uh, secondly, we had another, uh, case, uh, we got dismissed this past month. Carl Bowers versus Carter County was a, a, um, disgruntled former inmate lawsuit, and that was settled and released, uh, dismissed. Uh, no, nothing outside of insurance coverage there. Uh, and just, uh, last week, I believe Wednesday, um, I filed seven new cases in Chancery Court for the, the litter regulation violations. Uh, so there's seven new cases that'll be proceeding on through court. Uh, we're in the process of getting folks served right now. Uh, other than that, uh, I'll let my written report reflect the, the normal work I do monthly. Uh, and obviously, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions for Attorney Harden?
Uh, Chairman, uh, Acuff, First District, uh, Attorney. Uh, last month, we asked you to serve as a counselor to two departments. Can you give me an update on that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. I did, uh, begin that process. I did meet individually with, uh, with Mr. Burke and Mr. Schutler. Uh, due to, uh, vacations and, and family, uh, tragedies, uh, the, the joint meeting hasn't happened yet, but I'm still planning to do that. Uh, but as of now, uh, I think, uh, we're at a point where the, the departments are working together professionally. Uh, and like I said, I will follow up with a joint meeting and any, uh, reporting that comes out of that, uh, you know, I'll handle through the, the chair of the commission as I usually do. Uh, but just initially speaking, um, outside of advising the, uh, the individual parties of relief they can pursue, uh, from the county perspective, uh, I don't see any formal action coming out of it, uh, but I will make that final report.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Any more questions for Attorney Harden? Thank you, Attorney Harden, for your report. Move on to commissioner comments.
I'd just like to say I really appreciate the Health and Welfare and the other committees that's helped with this internet thing. This is a real big issue that's needed in our county. I hope that y'all continue to push really hard forward with this and try to, uh, get something solved and done with it. There've been a lot of people that's been working in the, the midst of this, and it takes a lot to get it done. And fortunately, we've got a good crew working on it. So I appreciate it, guys. Chairman Hill.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
The Sandra Culler, Seventh District. I have a question for Mr. Burke. Uh, the findings over the pay for the officials, will that be a continued finding with the county?
The alter couldn't tell us for sure if it, if it would be, but I wouldn't be surprised if it is again this year. But after that, I would think it'd go away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One else. I do have a couple items I'd like to discuss. First being my short tenure at this position, would, would this body be willing to want to have a joint meeting with the city council as we go into our budget years coming up very soon to discuss any ideas that we have of working together?
Uh, I think it'd be good, thank.
Yeah. Chairman Hill, uh, Acuff, First District. Uh, as you all know, we've had one meeting with them, and I thought they were supposed to occur quarterly, and of course, part of that was COVID got in the way. But I would strongly support that. I think we need to be doing more and more with the city, other than just the animal shelter, even though that's been a great opportunity for us to partner together in that. Uh, I think there's more that we can do, and I thank you for bringing that back to the floor. I would totally support it.
Thank you.
Chairman Hill, um, I spoke with Wes Frazier today, and the reason we do want to do that again, as Dr. Acuff said, he's working on getting that together again for us. I asked him to today when I met with him. Um, and hopefully that'll be real soon. They, they plan to discuss it at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. And the second item I'd like to discuss is since I have no heart in running for mayor, uh, we, I want to be transparent in the process, and I want to get your all's feedback. There's a lot of motions right now. These are big decisions for the people who's going to run for this office. Um, my timeframe is to look at opening up the application process after the October meeting. Once the applications are in, I'd like to turn those into election commission to verify that these people are eligible. I'd like to have a called meeting, a special call meeting with a question answer session with each of those people, and then vote in December. Does anybody have any issues? And that would also allow the Seventh District time to fill their seat. Any suggestions from the body?
Chairman Hill, Acuff, First District, I, I would, I would support that plan, sir. Thank you for putting it forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else has any comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let me add something real quick.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
We're talking about the mayor and just, just to bring some positive light to this and, and his passing, I was actually on Ripton, uh, Saturday, doing a litter index, actually. And I passed the road, the, uh, Captain Nelson Cemetery Road, I think. And I don't know if anybody had had a chance to go to that burial. I was not present at the time, but I, that caught my eye, and I said, I've got to go up there and check it out. And I, I pulled up that road and the cemetery's just, I mean, it's, you know, a few hundred feet up the road and pulled in there, and, and to me, it was just, it was really a glorious sight, and I know it might sound funny, but, uh, but just the cemetery is beautiful. And, I mean, a serene place and, and couldn't be a better fitting for our mayor or the, the past mayor. And, uh, it was, it was just neat, and I thought I'd bring it up. I took a picture and, uh, I made sure of that with some folks, but it, just a beautiful place and, and, and just.
Yeah. Yes, sir. It was a, it was a very touching service. I saw a lot of people there. There was a lot of people from the community. The Elizabethan Fire Department did a, a number one service with their honor guard, all the volunteers. Uh, it was just a, it was well done to honor a mayor.
A well-placed rest, for sure.
I would like to compliment John Thompson, if you're listening, John, for a fantastic article about our interim mayor. And she exhibited exactly what all of us feel. We love this county or we wouldn't be here. And that was very heartfelt. I didn't cry, but it was a good article.
Well, I wanted, it, it's not just me, it's all of us, and I didn't get here by myself. Um, I, we have a great commission. And I, I can't say that I've worked with any better people in making decisions for this county, and I applaud every one of you. Um, we agree to disagree, and I think that's what makes this, you know, twenty-four commissioners shouldn't be agreeing on everything, but, uh, I think we're doing a great job, and, and I just applaud every single one of you, um, for what you've done and what we continue to do.
Anybody else? Again, thank you all for your dedication to our county, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all.
Right here, right here, right here.
What now, Brad?